We always ask for work from 3:00 to come this morning and lead us in prayer. This morning Minister Jim Wilt is here from Monterey Christian Church. Pastor, thanks for being here this morning and please lead us the podium, George.
How many Fathers we bow before you this morning, knowing that we are your children here upon this earth and you placed us here in this world to do your will. We ask that the Commission today run this meeting here and people brought forward their business that everything be according to your will and that these things will be done well. We thank you for the cooler weather, that's a little bit drier and a little more pleasant to live in and we thank you for this county which is run well and has a lot of good people in it. We thank you for Jesus Christ, your Son, and we ask that you blessing in this meeting and these Commissioners and these people here that all they do and say will be in accordance with your will. Guide us now and protect us and keep us safe. As we now say a pledge to our country's flag, we ask your blessing upon that. We pray through your son Jesus Christ.
Amen. And now officially start our meeting. Commissioner Corkman, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks and we'll start with our regular agenda. The meeting's been called to order and we will go to Letter B. Letter B is approval of regular session minutes of 7:30, 2025. Board, you've had these minutes early and had an opportunity to review them. Do I have a motion to approve?
I tried to do this last week and we'll see how the audio works out.
Been moved in second, roll call, Gail.
Commissioner Bachelot.
But this is going to be the County Commissioners Meeting for August 6th.
Letter C, we have reached the time and designation for public hearing.
They format the agenda for eight and a half by four to April, which nobody has.
To review and comment regarding the draft five-year consolidated plan for fiscal years 2025 through 29.
There are a couple of presentations up front that are going to happen here.
And the fiscal year 2025 annual action plan, projects for Claremont County's strategy for investing housing and urban development funds, including community development, block grant and home investment partnership. Gail, I understand Desmond is here this morning and he is going to conduct this hearing. Desmond, thanks for being here this morning.
Good morning Commissioners, I'm Desmond Maata with the Community Economic Development Department. This will be the third five-year plan, I believe, for Claremont County. Your first one was when you received home funds originally in 2015. Another one was done in 2020 and then so HUD requires these every five years, so this would be beginning in 2025. Today's hearings to receive public comment on Claremont County's draft five-year consolidated plan. This is required by HUD to participate in CDBG and home programs. It's been prepared in accordance with HUD guidelines and serves four purposes. Number one, it allows us to apply for CDBG and home funds each year and it provides a framework for implementing HUD-funded initiatives and it also provides a benchmark for future evaluation on how we're doing. To develop this plan, we had assistance with a consultant. There were 13 in-depth stakeholder interviews with lots of social service providers and community members.
Thirteen.
We did receive 264 surveys from the public, so we felt like that was a good response.
They did a survey process that I don't think anybody even knew about.
We did have two public meetings, one in person and one virtual for people that may want to log in. So we're now in the 30-day public comment period of the draft plan and a notice was published in the local newspaper on June 13th and on the county website for review. The draft plan is available on the county's website and in our office. Some of the priorities and needs identified, some were very similar to the last plan. Housing rated very high as far as housing affordability, quality and solutions for homeless and special needs populations. Another need identified is neighborhood revitalization, which includes items we heard that infrastructure is needed, roads, sewer, water, sidewalks, broadband. Public facilities is another category, so we heard the need for emergency shelters, senior and youth centers, parks and recreation spaces.
So when they do these kinds of studies and these meetings, there's absolutely no consideration for cost.
Some of those items in the plan are needs for job training, transportation, childcare, youth services and other supportive services. And finally, economic development was also down to be a priority need, items such as job creation, business site improvements, facade upgrades and other commercial revitalization.
That would create better jobs.
After today's public hearing, as far as next steps, we'll provide a draft plan to the board for your review and your eventual passage of the plan and then we'll submit that to HUD. So if there's any public comments, I think we take those at this time.
Okay, is anyone here to make a comment on CDBG consolidated plan for fiscal years 2025 through 2029? Hearing none. Okay, Board, we have not received any correspondence for anything. Have you, has your office?
Not yet.
No, and they have not.
I'm going to start bumping down the volume on their feed when I'm talking because I got to play with this a little bit to get more comfortable.
Anyone here for or against? Doesn't look like it, so.
All right, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and thank you Desmond this morning for coming over and informing us again, so, all right.
This is all just kind of a dog and pony show, meaning check the boxes for some government money.
Director Kathy Harmon, the Loan Specialist, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Rural Development for Small Towns, Big Futures are here to give us a presentation. Mr. Tassel, thanks for being here this morning with the Board of Commissioners. We appreciate what you do.
Commissioners, thank you, appreciate the opportunity, thank you for the invite. Charles Tassel, I'm the State Director, I was appointed on June 2nd by the President and Secretary for USDA to work with Ohio, specifically Ohioans, and it's been interesting as an appointee, I was offered some opportunities in DC and I said, you know, one of the great things, I'd love to work in Ohio and it's Buckeyes helping Buckeyes. We have a great team, we're about 43% of staff where we were before, so.
Charles Tassel is kind of a slime, so he was the head of the, he was the chair of the Republican Party and then he didn't get endorsed, so he quit and he ran for the House because a patrol's sucking at the tit of government guy and so now he got some gum appointment at the USDA and now he goes around and shoves money. He likes to spend other money, let me just put it that way.
Across Ohio that do not have five-year plans. Without that five-year plan, they can't go on to get other grants, to get other assistance to grow their communities, to develop their communities and that's really an area that we are going to be shaping and focusing the grant efforts in Ohio to address that concern, to make sure that small townships are actually represented and actually have some funds to help get those first things. We talk about, you know, are the communities, are they walking or running? We have communities that aren't shoes on yet and helping them get that first step to get up and going and get moving is really where we're focused at, so it's been an honor.
Before this stuff, he was a apartment consultant, like basically working for people that were trying to buy apartments. He was like the head of some apartment lobby.
Being a native here, appreciate the opportunity to come out, I live in Stonelake Township, so appreciate being able to participate in some of the different committees, housing and such. I'll say it this way, Kathy will come up and speak on some of the specific programming, but appreciate the opportunity and we have an open door policy, to extent that we can participate and help, we are ready to and appreciate the opportunity.
You bet.
Thank you, we will for questions afterward.
Thanks for being here.
All right, thank you, thanks very much. And I do have a little bit of information that I'd like to pass out, so if you would take one, pass it around, if there's not enough for everybody, I have some business cards. I'm Kathy Harmon and I'm here today to talk about USDA Rural Development and also to talk specifically about the areas where I work, which is the Community Programs Section, Community Facilities Projects and also Water and Wastewater. And what we do is we make loans and grants to areas that have projects going on, so I'm going to briefly cover some of the slides and some of the slides I'll go more in detail. All right, so State Director Tassel just mentioned that we are in the Hillsborough Office and this map shows all of the different area offices we have in the state. I'm in the Hillsborough Office, we have four offices throughout the state and we take care of 23 counties.
One of the things you're going to find is that nobody ever makes a presentation to the Commissioners about reducing government spending. It's all about more spending, more government, more this, and these are supposed to be conservative Republicans. I challenge any of these Commissioners to have any topic on the agenda ever, a special presentation about how to cut spending and/or how to increase the effectiveness of county services, not, you know, some government thing, but cutting spending or increasing the effectiveness of county services. Those are never topics of discussion.
The U.S. Forest Service and then what's near and dear to my heart, Rural Development. Rural Development has its hands in everything and I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk to everybody about what USDA Rural Development can do for our communities. Our organizational structure, we actually are made up of several different services, the Rural Business Cooperative Service, Rural Housing Service and the Rural Utility Service. And I just want to mention that as a federal entity, we operate with what Congress gives us. So if Congress gives us a lot of funding for loans and grants, then we turn around and make those loans and grants to our communities so they can get projects going. In years where there's not a lot of grant money like this year and we don't know what fiscal year 2026 is going to mean, but you know, there's always been the loan dollars, but grant dollars are sometimes harder to come up with. But the whole focus is trying to build the rural community so that it has the same kind of services as our urban neighbors. So with the Rural Business and Cooperative Services, this program, the Business and Industry Loan Guarantee Program is where a commercial loan is made, but the federal government puts their guarantee behind it and it's all to inspire business within rural areas, so that's one of their programs. Another one of their programs is the Rural Business Development Grant and this again supports small and emerging businesses in rural areas. Now the next service, that was the Rural Business Service, this service is the Rural Utility Service and this is all about infrastructure and including infrastructure in the electric program. And folks in the electric program actually make loans and grants to build.
Sorry for messing up the screen sharing there, I'll get better, I'm just figuring out how this all works.
Driven in Ohio and driven through a spot where you don't have internet connectivity. The focus of this program is to provide broadband to all those areas throughout the nation and for us in Ohio. We actually have a project that we just started in Latham, Ohio, in Pike County, they don't have any internet there, so it's really interesting. Another program.
This woman's obviously an idiot because they have Starlink in Pike County. What these government people are doing though is they could just, let's say the government paid, wanted to subsidize Starlink for certain communities. They could, they could do that, you know, easily, they'd have, it would be cost effective, but instead what they want to do is lay line and in these rural areas, one of the issues is the places are too spread out, the cost of laying the lines and then if people move or build a new house, every incremental house is a bunch of line laying, it's very complex and difficult. So what makes sense is to use a terrestrial, to use a Starlink type solution in these places, but that's kind of lost on politicians because they want to have contracts with their buddies and stuff for doing massive infrastructure projects on the ground and on the ground.
Water and waste disposal and in our community facilities, they vary each quarter, so they can go up or they can go down. So right now our highest rate is 5.25% is our highest rate, but our lowest rates, depending on what your median household income is for your community, you can get a lower rate. The good thing about our program, another good thing about our program is that if you lock in a rate, so if you file an application and we lock you in at a certain interest rate, if the rates go up, you never have to go up to that, you're always locked in with the lower rate. But if the rates go down by the time we close your loan, you can actually get the lower rate, so that is a good thing about our program. And I just have a few examples through the state of Ohio. This project, this was out in Athens County and you can see it's quite a large project. Now you may not need 28.8 million, maybe you're a village and you need to repair your sewer plant and that's going to be a smaller loan, but we can fund that, but we also work with other funding partners to layer the funding to make bigger projects happen. And in this one, they had to connect a lot of people to the sewer who never had connections before. This one, we worked with the EPA, the Army Corps, Ohio Water Development Authority and six different phases.
By the way, did you notice that Charles Tassel did not present this stuff? He's just kind of probably a figurehead, he doesn't really know about this department, so this woman has to present this stuff and he probably gets paid more than her.
And grants to help them. It's been said that USDA Rural Development can make, can fund a village from the ground up. Well, I already talked about electric, talked about your water and sewer. This program, our Community Facilities Program helps to build a lot of the other infrastructure and not just infrastructure, but the equipment that goes in those buildings. So with our Community Facilities Program, we could build a hospital, we could build a fire department or a police station, we could also put a fire truck in that building, you know, we make loans and grants to help make that happen. So a couple of real-world examples, if you're ever driving through Adams County or Owensville or driving through Blanchester and you get pulled over by the police, chances are one of those vehicles was funded with the USDA loan and grant, so you're welcome. With our program, we offer direct loans, loan and grant combinations and also those loan guarantees again. And for community facilities, our lowest rate right now is four and a half percent for poverty areas and 5.25 is the market rate. You're eligible for assistance if you're in an unincorporated area or an incorporated area with a population that's below 20,000. Some of the advantages, it's no fee with a fixed interest rate and a longer term. So for some of our water and sewer plant projects, they have a 40-year term, but some of our, if we're building a fire station, that could be a 35-year term, so it really helps to spread those payments out. And there's no prepayment penalty for our program. If, say Claremont County ran into a bunch of money and wanted to pay us off, no problem, no fee for that. What will happen then is those funds will go back and then we'll be able to make loans to other rural communities who need them. Just a few projects that we've actually been able to fund through our Community Facilities Program. This is up at Yellow Springs, we built a beautiful fire station up there, 5.7 million, 5.75 million dollar project. In Fayette County, we helped them with the courthouse restoration. Now this one was a $2 million restoration and what happens is we work with a lot of different folks, including the State Historic Preservation Office and help to get this, you know, to get the historic preservation part done right. Another project, this is out between Marietta and Wheeling in Monroe County to build a new 15.5 million dollar jail out there. This one is up northeast of Cleveland, the Berkshire School District actually needed to build a new school and so they worked with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission and the project was over 50 million total, but between USDA and OFCC, they were able to make this happen. This is a picture of our construction sign and then this is a picture of the facility once it's built. Then finally, the last slide that I have to show you, some of the projects that we've had is, this is the Berchard Public Library up in Sandusky County, southeast of Toledo, they needed to do a building addition and so this is a 3.5 million dollar project. So again, working with SHIPO to make sure that everything was done in accordance with historic preservation. So our program is competitive, you know, we offer up to 40-year terms and we have staff engineers and architects on staff to help with your project, help advise to get it done right. We also have environmental coordinator that can help to get that important part done and we have staff that will assist you throughout. That's why I'm here, I'm in the Hillsborough Office to help answer calls, to help you file the application. I'd just like to see another show of hands, anybody that thinks filing government paperwork is easy? I don't see any hands, it's not, but we're here to help you through that process, through application, to loan closing and to help construct your facility. So we're committed to helping fund these projects and to improving rural America. I'm going to be in the back, if anybody has any questions at any time, just let me know about your projects, we'd love to help.
As Kathy said, we're from the federal government, we're here to help. But seriously, if there's any questions, we're happy to participate and as we get more information coming out with the new budget and even from the rest of the information from the one big beautiful bill coming out, we do work with the Township Association for Ohio, Municipal League and Commissioners Association, Mr. President, and we'll be providing that information out as well, so we'll be reaching out.
Great. Thank you. Board, any questions, Kathy or Charles? Thanks for being here this morning, we really appreciate it. And just to give a comment there, Claremont County has an Economic Development Department, you know, we have staff that can also help, you know, when they want to get in touch with you all there in Hillsborough and also they can provide help for applications and all those kinds of things, so we try to put our best foot out there so that people have access to those kinds of programs. So thanks for being here this morning, really appreciate it. You bet. We will move on with our regular agenda, we are at some new employee introductions. First up, we have Community Economic Development, Heath Wilson is here to introduce a couple of people. Heath, thanks for being here this morning.
Morning Commissioner.
Morning.
Don't be afraid. All right, I'm happy to introduce two new members to the Building and Department Team, Stephanie Ward and Chad Zink. Stephanie will be a permit specialist and Chad is a building inspector. Stephanie, they both started August 4th, 2025, so they're in their first week. She is, Stephanie's a lifelong resident of Claremont County, her previous experience in customer service will serve her very well as a permit specialist. She enjoys taking walks in her spare time. Chad has experienced, or lived in Claremont County for 40 years, he has many years' experience working locally for electrical and fire protection companies, which makes him a good fit as a building inspector. He loves to spend time with his children and is an avid golfer. So, thank you Commissioner.
Great, welcome. Thanks, thanks to both of you for joining the team here at Claremont County. Stick around and we'll take a picture here before you leave, all righty. Next up is our animal shelter. Kara Swartz is here this morning and she's here to introduce a new employee.
Morning.
Good morning.
Here I am, your kennel administrator, I'm here to introduce Callie Reardon, she recently started, is a new full-time kennel attendant. She is from Bethel and comes to us from the Brown County Humane Society, she was a kennel technician there and she has a 10-month-old daughter.
And thank you for all your work last night, you did a great job at the Sheriff's Night Out event and your whole staff, tell them thank you.
Yeah, I will, we have a lot of staff volunteers that were able to help and we're really grateful to be a part of it and we hope to be a part of it every year moving forward.
We saw that the League of Animal Welfare had a van over there too that had some kittens in it that, you know, they were enticing some of those young kids, no question.
Yeah, yeah, they were awesome there, we got to talk with them a little bit, so it's good to see our rescue partners out in the community and, you know, work together in that sort of way.
And you survived the rain.
Yep.
The lightning and everything.
The dogs were wet though, they didn't.
It did clear late, but it was quite wet there for a while, no question.
Yeah, we had a couple that were scared of storms that.
I guess. Very nice.
Well, thanks McCollie for joining the team. Water Resources, Brian Gruber.
Morning. This morning I introduced Dakota DeNeer, he is our most recent Water Resources employee working in the collections, sewer collections department, out there cleaning the sewer lines every day and keeping the flows going. He is a resident of Union Township and a graduate of West Claremont High School, also holds a degree from the University of Cincinnati in education and his past jobs include paving and construction. Dakota DeNeer here.
Dakota, thanks for being here, we're glad you joined the team. And for those that don't kind of put that in perspective really quick, they service 55,000 customers throughout Claremont County when it comes to water and sewer, you know, depending on which side of the house that they work on, but it's super important and it pulls them out all hours of the day and night, you know, to make repairs and so we really appreciate everything you've done. You guys like to take a picture with us, come on up. Come on up.
So this is the commissioners. They do all this dog and pony show crap at the beginning of their meetings where they bring in people, take pictures, give out certificates. Nobody's paying attention because it's at 10 o'clock and people are working to pay their property taxes. So, so, but it's so pandering. It is so J.C. Penney, David Painter suit. It just really irritates me that they take all this time for this type of stuff. I'm not against employees, obviously. I just think that there's better uses of time. They could once a month do this. They not do it at all, or they could have little vignettes that they post online when they go, and they go to visit these agencies. Get out of your ivory effing towers, Peter Corcoran and Bachelor.
Nor engage in debate. The commissioners are not expected to comment on matters brought before the board at this time. Each speaker will speak only once, be recognized by the board president. In accordance with the board's rules, you'll have five minutes. Who'd like to go first? Come on up. Tell us your name and your address.
I'm not sure if this mic is activated. I can barely hear those.
Really?
The introductions.
Sorry.
Yeah. Is it on? David? Okay, people can't hear me?
Oh, oh, I've got you. Okay. My name is Debbie Davidson, and I'm a resident of Batavia Township. I live at 2265 Snyder Road with my husband, who's a disabled Vietnam vet. Claremont County Commissioner said that we will probably participate in the 287G program, and I need to know where the county is in the decision-making process. How are these costs and benefits being quantified? And how will the federalization of our local resources commence if we decide to do this? When will the community have an opportunity for input into a momentous decision by our county? There are three reasons I ask. Many of the costs of this program fall on the local jurisdiction. Overcrowding in our jail system is a real possibility. And the liability of unlawful arrest and detainment may fall directly on Claremont County. Couple of weeks ago, a U.S. citizen, an Iraq war veteran, was picked up at an ICE raid in Texas. If he sues, who pays? We have Hispanic residents in Claremont County. A table of them were speaking Spanish recently at Grandma's in Williamsburg. Are these people going to be harassed by masked officers of Claremont County? And I don't think it's a good look for us. And after seeing Kathy's excellent presentation, I think we have more important things to do here than be chasing down people because of the color of their skin. These things need to be decided in a thoughtful manner, and we need public input as to whether or not we are going to participate in this program. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Good morning. Good morning. My name's Jen Mazakelli. I live in Union Township. I would have come earlier about this, but kids, got one going off to college, dentist appointments, whatever. But I am concerned about the county entering into a 287G memorandum of agreement. It's been widely reported that, like Debbie said, the counties bear the cost. And, and I'm concerned about jurisdictional issues. We're seeing this down in Florida where somebody has a question and they go to the federal government, and the federal government says, well, it's in a county, and the county says, well, it's a federal program, and nobody can get answers. I think that when we come to the issue of federalizing county resources, county residents should be able to vote on that. I'm not here to say ICE is bad, immigration arrests are bad. I have my opinion, but that's not what this is about. This is about if we're going to make a decision about county resources, it needs to be above board. The public needs to be able to actually vote on it because I, I don't get the Claremont sign. So I don't know where notices are published. I don't see them. So I was not aware that there was public participation about the, the plan, which is fine. I mean, I did the survey, so I was able to put, provide input in that regard. But people don't always know what's happening before it happens. So I feel like a vote is the best way to make sure everybody has an opportunity to be heard. And if, if the entire county says, you know what, I think it's a great idea, then that's one thing. Now, for reasons, I was at the municipal courthouse the other day for a hearing. And while I was there, I was talking with somebody who represents pretty much everybody who works at VIP smoke shops. And he said, everybody is being detained. So I have a question. Have we already entered into a 287G partnership in the Claremont County Jail is being used as a de facto ICE detention center? And we, I mean, it can be a problem. We're seeing problems take place in Florida. We're seeing problems take place in Butler County. In Butler County, there were over 450, the last I heard. Over 450 people being detained in Butler County Jail, and seven out of 10 of them have no criminal record. Is this what we want for Claremont County?
I don't know what was going on with the volume there. It wasn't me, but it should be coming back.
About boycotting Butler County until they shut down the ICE detention center. I don't think that's what we want for Claremont. I don't know if the voters, the residents do, and we should be able to, to vote on it. So I would, well, first, I'd like to know if we've already begun the process. And second, because I think that's an important thing that we should know. And second, I would just strongly request that before anything go further, it be put to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then I'll close public participation, and we will move on. I'm going to move up staff and elected official discussions here. I understand that Jessica Powell is here to talk to us about CTC.
Okay, so this is something on the agenda about spending $1.6 million of federal money. This is why we have a $37 trillion debt on a study around CTC. I don't know, I bet you if you did an analysis, we could replace CTC with paying for people's Uber, and it would be cheaper than spending on a bus.
Feasibility study is what we're applying for. It's basically what we're trying to do is we're working with the other county departments to potentially be able to do a feasibility study to determine if we can help the workforce, the employers, and if that's a need that, for transportation, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself here, help businesses and employers to be able to get people to work within Claremont County. And then also potentially getting employees within Claremont County to places outside of Claremont County, just trying to get people to work. There's a lot of transportation needs out there that we are not necessarily being able to meet at this point in time. So ODOT understands that. They're trying to get out grants to help us with that. This would be the first step in being able to do something like that. It would be a feasibility study to determine that is needed here first before we move forward. So we've actually worked with Community and Economic Development. They're looking to assist us with a 20% match from Economic Development's conveyance fees. And the total project cost would be about $200,000, but we were looking to get $160,000 from the state of Ohio through the grant. So any questions or?
In, in this mobility partnership, we have a resolution today that you're requesting to add to the agenda? Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Do we want to handle that one separately, Ralph, at this time? Or is it okay to?
Do it through the.
Add it all together?
We could do it.
Through the additions? That's how we'll do it. Okay. Thank you. Any other staff or county elected official conversation? We will move back to our consent agenda. Board, a consent agenda has been prepared for you. I know you've had it earlier. Are there any items we need to remove from that agenda for further discussion? Then I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
So the consent agenda is a bunch of stuff that they don't even talk about. They sort of just approve them all en masse. And sometimes it's okay, sometimes it's not. I think it's very lazy when they meet during the workday at 10 o'clock. They should spend more time covering the item with some sort of discernment in trying to save money.
119-25 to approve payment vendors in the total amount of $1,196,864 and 1 cent. As outlined in the BCC approval invoice reports for checks dated August 6th, 2025, BCC directed prepaid invoice report and procurement card transaction report is presented in the county, presented by the county auditor on August 4th, 2025, and further authorizing county auditor to issue warrants pursuant and in compliance with Section 319.16 of the Ohio Revised Code. Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Been moved in second. Roll call.
Commissioner Bachelor.
Yes.
Commissioner Corcoran.
Yes.
Commissioner Painter.
Yes. We move on to item number nine.
Morning, Board.
Morning.
Item nine is a recommendation to execute an amendment to a contract between the board and dynamic surface application out of Pennsyl, Pennsylvania. This was previously ratified by the board on April 9th of this year for an estimated cost of installing polymer expansion joint binder on six Claremont County bridges, with the amendment being no increase in the contract bias, but it reflects the actual quantities installed.
Board, you've heard the reading of item number nine. Do I have a motion for approval?
Make the motion. I'll second.
Been moved in second. Any further conversation or discussion? Roll call, Gail.
Commissioner Corcoran.
Yes.
Commissioner Bachelor.
Yes.
Commissioner Painter.
Yes. Item number 10. Hi, Andy.
Andy May is Director, CTC. Recommendation to authorize and execute grant application 6278-2025-1 with the Federal Transit Administration, 1200 New Jersey Avenue, Southeast Washington, D.C., 20590, between the county of Claremont, Ohio and the Federal Transit Administration, in the amount of $1,300,000 with $680,000 federal funding, $620,000 state funding for the purchase of a transportation study and reimbursement of operating expenses.
Board, you've heard the reading of item number 10. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion. Second.
And moved in second. Any further clarification? Roll call, Gail.
Commissioner Bachelor.
Yes.
Commissioner Corcoran.
Yes.
Commissioner Painter.
Yes. Thanks, Andy. Item number 11. Hi, Hannah.
Hi, Hannah.
Morning.
Morning.
Hannah Lubers with the Adams Claremont Solid Waste District, and this is a recommendation to adopt Resolution Number 120-25 to approve the Adams Claremont Solid Waste District 2025 Solid Waste Management Plan pursuant to and in compliance with Section 3734.55 of the Ohio Revised Code.
Board, you've heard the reading of item number 11. Do I have a motion for approval?
Make the motion. I'll second.
Been moved in second. Any further conversation? Roll call, Gail.
Commissioner Corcoran.
Yes.
Commissioner Bachelor.
Yes.
Commissioner Painter.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Item number 12.
Recommendation to authorize Thomas J. Eagle County Administrator to execute Amendment Number One to the Professional Service Agreement between the Board, Commissioners of Claremont County, Ohio, and Brower &amp; Muller Incorporated, 4518 Teller'sville Road, Dayton, Ohio, 45424, previously entered into on March 31st, 2025, for professional services to produce a sole study at 4,300 Fager Road in Batavia, Ohio, due to additional services needed related to encountering weaker souls for the increase of $2,790 with a total contract price to date of $12,540. This was a change order request that was approved during the work. As they were drilling, they were to go down to your 16 feet or 20, and several situations that they had to go as far as 30 feet before they hit Bedrock. Other cases, they went down to 16 feet, they went down to about 20, 25 feet. In about seven rate locations out of the 16 locations they did the sole boards for.
I believe it.
Okay. Board, you've heard the reading of item number 12. Do I have a motion for approval?
Make the motion. I'll second.
Been moved in second. Anything further? Roll call, Gail.
Commissioner Bachelor.
Yes.
Commissioner Corcoran.
Commissioner Painter.
Yes. Item number 13. Pam Haverkloss. Morning, Pam.
Morning, Pam.
Thanks for your work last night, too, in the rain.
Pam Haverkloss, Claremont County Emergency Management Agency. Item number 13 is a recommendation to nominate the following individuals for appointment and/or reappointment to serve on the Claremont County Local Emergency Planning Committee as approved by the Claremont County Local Emergency Planning Committee on July 17th, 2025. It's for an effective period of August 15th of 2025 through August 14th of 2027.
I want to jump in here because on the agenda, one of the people getting appointed to the Claremont County Emergency Planning Committee is Andrew McAfee, the weirdo that, that does not live in Claremont County and looks like he's trying to audition for gay porn. So why is Andrew McAfee always getting appointed to these, the parks board? The, the, he works at the chamber, now he's the local emergency planning committee. It is absolutely obscene. He is just a reliable, reliable yes vote for whatever the establishment wants. Therefore, he gets rewarded, and that, I, it's indefensible that you keep appointing this guy who doesn't even live in Claremont County onto all these government things.
So as you have people that change positions, or we have individuals that are more interested in being a part of the committee, we can always bring membership applications back to the Board of County Commissioners for approval, and then take it to the State Emergency Response Commission as well.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pam.
Thanks for all you do.
Item number 14.
So item number 14 is a recommendation to nominate the following individual for reappointment to serve on the Claremont County Local Emergency Planning Committee as approved by the Claremont County Local Emergency Planning Committee on July 17th of 2025, effective August 15th of 2025 through August 14th of 2027, pursuant to and in compliance with Section 3750.03B of the Ohio Revised Code. And this is for a recommendation to reappoint Commissioner Bachelor to be one of our elected official representatives.
You bet. Board, you've heard the reading of item number 14. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion. Roll call, Gail.
Commissioner Corcoran.
Yes.
Commissioner Painter.
Yes.
Commissioner Bachelor.
Thanks, Pam. Item number 15. Hi, Donnie.
Good morning.
Morning.
Donnie Meyer, on behalf of Department of Job and Family Services. Item number 15 is going to be a recommendation to reappoint the following representatives to serve on the Claremont County Family Services Planning Committee for a term of 7/1 of 25 through 6/30 of 27, to gather public input and review and making program recommendations and developing and maintaining a community plan to implement Ohio Works First pursuant to and in compliance with Section 329.06 of the Ohio Revised Code and other programs established under Chapter 5107, the Ohio Works First Program, and Chapter 5108, the Prevention, Retention, and Contingency Program of the Ohio Revised Code. Those individuals are listed on the recommendation.
Thank you, Donnie. Board, you've heard the reading of item number 15. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Been moved in second. Any further conversation? Roll call, Gail.
Commissioner Bachelor.
Yes.
Commissioner Corcoran.
Yes.
Commissioner Painter.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 16.
Item number 16 is a recommendation to appoint the following individual to serve on the Board of Directors of the Claremont County Port Authority, for the terms as outlined below. This would be Joe Wagner of Milford, Ohio, and it would be his first full term from 8/6/2025 through 8/5/2029.
Board, you've heard the reading of item number 16, the recommendation to appoint Joe Wagner to the Port Authority Board. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion. I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any further? Roll call.
Commissioner Corcoran.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Bachelor.
Yes.
Commissioner Painter.
Yes. Item number 17.
Item number 17 is a recommendation to employ the law firm of Frost Brown Todd, LLP, of Cincinnati, Ohio, as outside legal counsel to advise the Board of Claremont County Commissioners as it relates to Ohio Revised Code sections 50709, I'm sorry, 5709.77 through 5709.81 and 5709.63 through 5709.633. And further to authorize Thomas J. Eagle, county administrator, to execute a professional services contract between the Board of Claremont County Commissioners and the law firm of Frost Brown Todd, LLP, pursuant to and in compliance with the Ohio Revised Code, section 305.14, and the terms and conditions of the contract with the total compensation for attorney fees and costs associated not to exceed $5,000.
Board, you've heard the reading of item number 17. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Been moved in second. Any further conversation, Gail? You just want to Frost Brown Todd, their particular expertise for those sections are in the.
They are for rural enterprise zones and tax increment financing. We do have some issues that occurred with certain house bills that came on board just recently that extends times for TIFs in townships.
Mm-hmm. And I think that was an extension from 30 years to include 30 more, right?
I think 15 more, I think, yeah.
Yep. Any other conversation? Roll call.
Commissioner Bachelor.
Yes.
Commissioner Corcoran.
Yes.
Commissioner Painter.
Yes. Item number 18.
Morning, Board. Emily Akerzoff, Management Budget.
Morning.
Have a recommendation to resolve to prove and authorize changes in the annual appropriation resolution number 151-24 for county year 2025. These are three supplemental appropriations. The first is from Narcotics Unit Asset Forfeiture Other Expenses for $17,041.12, and that is so that they can spend some forfeiture money that was recently collected. The next is Prosecutor Civil Division Retirement Payout for $49,636.04, and that is obviously for retirement payout. And the third is for the Dog and Kennel Fund Animal Control Other Expenses for $20,000. And I just want to give a little more explanation on that one. If we go back to the Purina donation that was original for $20,000, was deposited or paid into the Dog and Kennel Fund, and it was originally earmarked for the, I think it was.
Player.
The player, which then the Boy Scouts came in and somebody donated and did the project. So now we have under contract the kennel expansion, which went through, I think, last week, $141,000. And as promised, this is the $20,000 that was in the Dog and Kennel Fund. I just needed to put the budget in place to cover that $20,000 for the kennel expansion. The other $121,000 is coming out of capital.
Which, which in, in just shorthand, real quick, means that the money that was donated was never lost, it was always accounted for by Claremont County, and it's being used in the kennel extension just as it was planned. And Nestle Purina is completely aware of that, and they know exactly where it's being spent. And I think we even provided them right down to the number line that that money is applied on, so.
So that, and how that money, when it was put into that Dog and Kennel Fund, that is their operating fund, you know, so the money gets in there and gets spent on operations. And when we originally did the budget, we did not put the $20,000 in for this specific capital portion of this project. So we're just kind of replenishing the operating funds that have been used.
Correct.
Yeah, so that it is earmarked in there, it's being used for that. There is a project number now tied to that that all has to do with the Purina donation.
That. Thank you. Board, you've heard the reading of item number 18. Oh, roll call, Gail. Did we, did we call it?
No.
Did we make a motion? Okay. You've heard the reading of item number 18. Do I have a motion for approval?
Make the motion. I'll second.
Been moved in second. Roll call.
Commissioner Corcoran.
Yes.
Commissioner Bachelor.
Yes.
Commissioner Painter.
Yes. Thanks, Emily. We are at letter G. I mean, H is additions to the agenda. I understand we have four additions. Is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner Painter. There are four add-ons for the board to consider. These are, the first one is a joint application for employment of outside counsel. The second will be resolution 121-25, amending resolution 104-25 for the Mental Health and Recovery Board Tax Levy.
I want to jump in here for a second. We'll cover these four additions. But I just want to point out, I put in the text comments that this shelter thing, this is how effed up the shelter is, and they can get a new person that acts nice, but it's all going to be a house of cards. The donation, the 20K donation they were just talking about was from February of 2022. I put the link, February of 2022. We're more than three years later. This is why they cannot run the shelter. Can you imagine you gave money to a shelter and it takes, and in three years, they don't use the money for what you intended? The same thing goes with this washing machine, 60K. The shelter used to get about $1 million a year under Claremont cares in private donations. Now they get zero, the kind of at the end donations that they got, those haven't been used effectively. So why would you ever give money to a shelter?
Item we.
Morning.
The first item we have is a recommendation to authorize David L. Painter, President of the Board of County Commissioners, to execute the joint application for employment of outside legal counsel with the Claremont County Prosecuting Attorney to the Claremont County Court of Common Police for the employment of legal counsel pursuant to and in compliance with section 305.14 of the Ohio Revised Code as it relates to the defense of the Claremont County Board of Commissioners in case number 2025 CA 07055, pending before the 12th District Court of Appeals and matters related thereto.
Absolutely. Do we have, you've heard the reading of the resolution. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Been moved in second. Any further conversation? Brian, want to just give us a quick overview on that and what that's for?
Yes, absolutely. Board, this is in regards to Clerk Camphouses, Mann-Davis lawsuit that was recently filed against the board related to funding of the municipal clerk's budget. We sent a joint application on the board's behalf over to the prosecuting attorney's office. They signed and returned it, and now it's before the board for their consideration and hopeful approval.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Roll call.
Commissioner Bachelor.
Yes.
Commissioner Corcoran.
Yes.
Commissioner Painter.
Yes. Item number two is resolution 121-25.
Item number two for the addition to the agenda is a recommendation to adopt resolution number 121-25, amending resolution 104-25, which most recently authorized the placement of a renewal levy in the amount of 75 hundredths mil for each $1 of taxable value and the effective rate of $15 for each $100,000 of the county auditor's appraised value for a period of five years to be placed on the 2026 tax duplicate for first collection in 2027 and for four years thereafter through 2031 for the purpose of providing or maintaining alcohol, drug addiction, and mental health services as it relates to the submission of the question of the tax to the electorate of the entire territory of Claremont County, Ohio, at the general election to be held on Tuesday, 11/4/2025. This is pursuant to and in compliance with sections 5705.221A and 5705.25 of the Ohio Revised Code.
Board, you've heard the reading of resolution 121-25. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion. I'll second.
Been moved in second. Any further clarification? Gail, just to clarify that a little bit, this, we are actually in amending a previous resolution because of a clarification that was given in the House bill.
Right. And Brian, would you like to step in?
Sure. Happy to. The reason why this came back as an amendment is that there were statutory revisions made under 5705.03 that became effective back in April where elections that occurred after mid-July. Those revisions impacted some of the things that the Secretary of State's office looked for on the underlying form and resolutions. So after this was originally passed, it was sent to the Claremont County Board of Elections. They then sent the proposed certification forms, ballot language, and resolutions to the secretary's office for final review and approval. The secretary's office flagged the original resolutions specifically because they did not list the dollars for each $100,000 of value. The first resolutions contained a collection rate of the millage for $100. So essentially, this resolution and the next one for the board's consideration amends what was previously passed so that it does contain the effective rate for $100,000 of the auditor's appraised value on the auditor's certification forms that were previously provided. Just for the board's clarification, it doesn't change the millage, it doesn't change the type levy, and it doesn't change what goes on the ballot. It just changes the resolution language to outline the effective rate for $100,000. This colleague spoke with the secretary's office yesterday regarding those revisions. I also sent a voicemail out to them and haven't heard back yet. But it's my understanding that the resolution before you meetings those updated requirements.
Thank you. And the amount per $100,000 is?
$15.
$15 per $100,000?
Yes. And it clarifies it for the taxpayers.
$23 on the next.
Yes.
Yeah.
Resolution for the board.
The first resolution is a replacement levy, right?
Renewal.
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 Yes.
Okay.
And the reason they changed it is to make it easier for taxpayers to understand exactly the amount that will be going up on their tax bills.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anything further? Roll call.
Commissioner Corcoran.
Yes.
Commissioner Bachelor.
Yes.
Commissioner Painter.
Item number three is resolution 122-25.
Morning again, commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Yeah, and Donnie Meyer from the Department of Job and Family Services. Through my position, I am also the Director of Child Protective Services. Recommendation on this item, add-on item, is going to be a recommendation to adopt resolution number 122-25, which amends the resolution number 110-25 for the reasons previously spoken of by Mr. Spitzer. Most recently authorized the placement of a renewal tax levy with an increase for children's services and the care and placement of children in the renewal amount of 80 hundredths point eight zero mil for each $1 of taxable value and an increase of 20 hundredths point two zero mil for each.
I just want to jump in here real quick and point out that never, ever, ever do you have our commissioners ever talking about trying to reduce costs, improve services. It is always about more taxes, more government, more this, more that. I'm not making a comment on individual levies at this point. I probably will in the near future. But they, it's always about, there's never, before you get to these levies, never a discussion of how can we become more efficient to deliver a higher percentage to the end, the end subjects of a given particular levy. How do we monitor to make sure that we're not having embezzlement like a Claremont Senior Services or the Housing Authority? Again, our commissioners are supposed to be conservatives. But watch, you will not hear a damn one of these people talk about how we can do more efficient with our services and save money so that we maybe don't have to.
25. Do I have a motion for approval?
Make the motion.
I'll second. Roll call, Gail.
Commissioner Bachelor.
Yes.
Commissioner Painter.
Yes.
Commissioner Corcoran.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number four. Filing of an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation. Kennedy Briggs. Good to see you this morning.
Morning, Kenny.
Good morning.
Morning.
This is a recommendation to authorize the filing of the Workforce Mobility Partnership Program application with the Ohio Department of Transportation at 1980 West Broad Street, Columbus, Ohio, in the amount of $160,000 with a local match of $40,000 to be provided by the Department of Community and Economic Development's share of conveyance fees for a total project cost of $200,000 and to authorize Thomas J. Eagle to execute any and all documents.
Board, you've heard their reading of the authorization for filing of an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion. I'll second.
Been moved in second. Any further conversation? Roll call, Gail.
Commissioner Corcoran.
Yes.
Commissioner Bachelor.
Yes.
Commissioner Painter.
Yes. Are there any other additions to come before the board at this time? Nope. Okay. With that said, I will move to letter L, or letter I. Letter I, requesting executive session in pursuant to section 121-22, G1 of the Ohio Revised Code to consider the employment or compensation of a public employee or more public employees. Board, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make. Go ahead.
Who's making it?
I'll second. That answered it.
Been moved in second. Roll call, Gail.
Commissioner Bachelor.
I think me, yes.
Commissioner Corcoran.
Yes.
Commissioner Painter.
Yes. We will proceed into executive session. We will return and conduct further business. Thanks for being here this morning.
Okay, so what they do is they then go into executive session a lot of the times, and you have no idea how long they're going to be in executive session. You have no idea what they're going to do when they get back from executive session. One of the things they do do is after executive session is called member comments, and that's when, for example, if you talk at public participation and then have left, that's when they like to slam people that aren't there. So a lot of times when I do go to the meeting, if I were to talk at public participation, I'll try to stay there, again, not knowing, because it tends to get them, instead of responding to the person at public participation, what they'll do is they'll wait till the end and member comments, and then they'll disparage somebody who talked at public participation versus having engaged them during the public participation phase of the meeting. So there you have it. There were probably just a few people in the audience that were actual citizens. If you notice, they have a shitload of government employees come over and do their picture taking, and then they all leave, and it basically is an empty room at that point. They refuse to have any meetings in the evening or even having a public input forum once a quarter in the evening or something like that that would be effective. And what I'm going to do is I am going to actually go off here. I'll probably let this run for a little bit just to see if they come back from executive session in a short period of time. They only had one item. Sometimes you can tell things like when, I think I one-on-one but lost on a lot, when they had gone into executive session and spent a huge amount of time when they had had only one item, it didn't make any sense. Because in executive session, they're only supposed to talk about things that they said they were going to talk, they announced when they went into executive session. So I'm going to pause here, go off screen, leave them on, and then come see, I might turn it off at some point if they don't come back in a reasonable time period, but I'm going to let it just run. So thank you for tuning in throughout this. Most of the time, I have probably close to 3X the number of people watching here than on their own stream. One of the ways they could change that, I think, would be if they started to allow on their own stream, allow an option for Zoom, to allow citizens to comment during public participation virtually. They can do that, there's nothing illegal about that, there's nothing against any rules. They could let citizens at public participation, just like they let the lawyer, notice how they let the lawyer participate remotely, but they won't let a citizen do public participation remotely. Tells you who they love and who they don't love. Thank you for, by the way, throughout this, when I do these, I'm going to obviously be a cynic and a critic. I think that's what we need more press to do in Claremont County and across our nation, because in many cases, our government is not responsive, does not solve our problems. And in reality, we have a lot more in common with each other than we do with any of these people that purport to be our leaders, like David Painter, Bonnie Bachelor, and Claire Corcoran. All right, I'm going to go on mute, let this play. Thank you for tuning in here. If you did, tell your friends. I just had an idea. While they are in executive session, I can keep watching them being in executive session, and I can play some of my latest reports on the Watchdog Wire. So I will keep watching, it says right now that there's seven people watching on the county channel, and there's 38 watching across my channels. And, but what I can do is I'll pay attention to when they come back from executive session, but I can play some of my latest Watchdog Wire reports that you might enjoy from while we're, where they're in executive session. This could be a weekly feature, you can get caught up while they're in executive session on Watchdog Wire reports that might be interesting or amusing. Okay, so what I'm going to play now is the... This is Police Night Out.
Hopefully it'll clear up, and this is just a brief interlude, but...
Yeah, messed up, I didn't have the sound plan. I'm learning, this is the first time I've done this, so I'm going to go back, play it again with the sound, and I'm keeping track of when they come back from executive session on the commissioner's side, but enjoy this from the, from Police Night Out. I'm sorry about messing up the sound.
You're still forbidden, though, from doing a regular interview.
I have not been told that I'm able to, so...
I'm good, how you doing? Huh?
Wet.
At least you got a canopy, there's like two places over there that have no canopies. I'm currently at a very, very rainy Police Night Out for the sheriff's office at Batavia Township's administrative building and park. Just to get an idea, this is the current status. Lot of rain. Hopefully it'll clear up, and this is just a brief interlude, but right now, very rainy. Looks a little rough. Hopefully it clears up. Lot of booths here. I'm seeing if anybody from the prosecutor's office says hello to me. Not one so far. I'm good, how you doing?
Wet.
Huh?
Wet.
At least you got a canopy, there's like two places over there that have no canopies. And they're just sitting out in the rain, so... Is Mr. Tercoville going to be here today? Okay, about what time, or anybody check their phone on whether it's going to keep raining or quit raining?
It doesn't look great, yeah.
Oh, it looks like it's gonna, I checked before I came here, and it looked like it might pass us over, or didn't show up on the map too much. So, all right, thank you, guys. Mr. Daimling, how you doing?
Good. How are you?
Nice to see you.
Pretty rainy.
I'm keeping dry. Well, it did start raining about two minutes after I got out of my car, but I checked before I got here, and it said, it looked like it was not going to be that bad here, but maybe my weather radar's not up to snuff.
But that was before they knew you were coming.
I need a new app, so, you mind, you want to do a little quick interview about your time after Union Township and your views on the retire rehire that I heard that you expressed at the...
No, I don't want to do an interview.
Okay, you don't want to do an interview?
No.
Hey, Kara, how you doing?
Good.
You ready to do a quick little interview now about what developments have happened?
I'm actually getting ready to take Moose back because he's starting to lunge at other dogs, so...
All right, but real quick, what have been the biggest positive developments so far at the shelter under your tenure?
I mean, the team collaboration's been great, we work really well together as a team, we just recently got approved for the new outdoor kennels, so we're going to start that construction soon, it's just really exciting, that'll put us up 53 outdoor kennels. So everybody's really looking forward to that, dogs will be able to get out a lot more, and it'll be easier on the staff as well, so...
And you're still forbidden, though, from doing a regular interview?
I have not been told that I'm able to, so...
Okay, that's sad, don't you think?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, so they're still in executive session, hopefully you enjoyed that one. The, I never thought of this, but next time I'll...
All right, so I am in...
I will think ahead as to what, what could be interesting content.
You're still forbidden, though, from doing a regular interview.
I have not been told that I'm able to, so...
I can actually, if I get my act together, I can actually upload one of these, I can actually upload these into the tools so I could just play them directly from there. I'm going to go ahead and play while they're still in commissioners' meeting. This is a brief one, a five-minute one on Crazy Katie Turpstra.
Mr. Hicks, since you're not a lawyer or a journalist...
So I got the idea of the debacle yesterday in which Judge Katie Turpstra granted my Rule 12 request to record in her courtroom, but then put terms and conditions on it where she apparently has stayed up all night writing them out and putting the wrong date on her order that would have made it impossible for me to record anything without being in contempt of court. She intentionally seemed to do this. There is something mentally wrong with this person. They should not be on the bench. I am more convinced of that every day. Remember, in 2022, her and her husband were involved in a plot to smear and demonize me as a Putin stooge and as a Democrat. Lying seems to be easy for them, easy for her, like that I trespassed on her property or that I in any way have been disruptive or unruly to her, or that somehow trying to ask her a question at a campaign event is me harassing her family. She is not stable, she is not right. And you can listen now to the whole interchange, it's about three and a half minutes, but remember the part where she decides that I'm not a journalist? You know, I'm doing everything that the founders wanted the press to do. Katie Turpstra is doing exactly what the founders feared from politicians.
Parties, before we begin and bring Mr. Cheetumout and call the case, I did want to inform you that there has been a request to broadcast in these two matters from Christopher R. Hicks/Watchdog Wire LLC. I do see Mr. Hicks in the courtroom today. Mr. Hicks, since you're not a lawyer or a journalist, I did want to make clear my orders, sir, I'm talking, I did want to make clear my orders related to your request to broadcast, which I will grant, but I am going to advise you, and I will give you a copy of these orders, that you must position yourself and your equipment only in the areas designated by the court. Where you're sitting is fine if you can set your tripod up just right next to you. You may not move about the courtroom during the proceedings, you may not enter and exit the courtroom except during the breaks in the proceedings, you may not engage in any activity that is distracting to the proceedings. You may not record any of the following: any audio or video or image of any juror, any audio of any conference or consultation between the defendant in this matter and his attorney, any audio of any conferences or consultation between co-counsel, any audio or any conferences conducted at the bench when the attorneys come up here, any audio of the courtroom or any of its participants when the court is not in session, and any audio or video of any witnesses and/or victim who objects to being recorded without the express permission of the court. The parties are advised to consult with your witnesses and/or your victims and let the court know if any of them do object prior to their testimony being taken. Petitioner is hereby advised that engaging in any of the prohibited behaviors or otherwise engaging in distracting or disruptive behaviors will result in the revocation of the permission to broadcast and may, depending on the circumstances, result in removal from the courtroom and/or contempt proceedings. Petitioner is advised that the court will not allow distractions, impairment of the solemnity and dignity of the proceedings, or any conduct that would impede due process or a fair trial in these matters. Do you understand all that, Mr. Hicks?
Yes, Your Honor.
Do you agree to that, Mr. Hicks?
Your Honor, I'm setting the camera up over here because that puts the jury box in line aside of the camera, so all your colleagues have it on the other side because...
So what she had done is she told me to, she was setting me up to hold me in contempt by forcing me to put the camera in a position at which it would be impossible to film any of her courtroom without violating rules about filming jurors. So that's why we're having an interchange, you can't hear me that well. This is courtroom audio, that's what I mean by Crazy Katie Turpstra. She is not right, I mean, she is not right, and she gets involved in the smear campaigns that I'm a Putin stooge with her husband, lies about that I'm somehow going to trespass onto her property, and then tries to set me up for contempt. I wonder if she does this with people that are before her in court? She is a prosecutor office loyalist and probably has a view of guilty until proven innocent if the prosecutor brings you forward. So, and her inability to take simple questions, if you remember at the fair, I asked her, tried to ask her, how was her judgeship treating her, and she lost it out of control, and then has spent, I think her, I'm not sure, but spent time then trying to get videos of her blocked off of social media platforms because they show the real Katie Turpstra. So, any event, I'm going to keep this, keep playing from here.
The jury is going to be on this side, you cannot set up over here because this entire side of the courtroom is going to be taken up by the jury. Well, Mr. Hicks, you're not to record the juror in any manner, anyway, so you will have to direct your camera in an angle or a fashion that makes it so that you do not capture the jurors. Mr. Hicks? Mr. Hicks? Mr. Hicks? This is my order, we are doing the jury selection process first. Because of the way the courtroom is set up, the jurors will be in this entire half of the courtroom. You cannot sit over there, you cannot set up over there, I will not permit you to be in their vicinity. You can set up where you are, you can record whatever you may record, again, remembering that you cannot record any audio, video, or image of any juror during the course of the jury selection or any part of this trial. So do what you need to do in order to set up and record whatever you may, we will give you a copy of my instructions.
So I just want to point out that, you know, a lot of the judges, we have nine judges in Claremont County, none have ever had a competitor in their current judicial capacity, only two have ever had a competitor in any judicial capacity, except it's really, I'm going to say two and a half, because Marilyn Burke ran for Appeals Court, which was not a local judgeship, and she had a competition and ultimately lost that race, and she's a domestic relations judge now. But we kind of have a tallest midget contest of judges, and Katie Turpstra seems to be completely unqualified and unhinged most of the time, most of the time. But you see here, I compare this with, let's say like a Kevin Miles or even a Victor Hadad that I have had some experience with, they wouldn't be like she is, they'd be trying to solve the problem, like, you know, they would get that, what I'm saying is, I can't put a camera here because I can't follow your order if I put a camera here, they would have thought about this, but not Katie Turpstra, she just bitches, she's, bitches, moans, carries on, that's why, one of the things, too, is that she was exceptionally not liked as an assistant prosecutor for being ridiculously inflexible to work with people. So she's just kind of, you know, I'm glad to bring exposure to it, and she brings exposure to herself, though, by her idiotic behavior, but this is why a lot of the politicians in Claremont County don't want, don't want to have, to have any exposure. I'm just watching, I'm watching, I got it on my computer, but I'm also watching on my phone for the commissioners coming back as well, to make sure that I don't miss flipping back. Let me let this video finish out, then we'll see if there's something else.
Do you understand my instructions?
I'm going to leave, Your Honor, or file a complaint.
Go right ahead. All right. Can you file stamp that in? Can you also make sure that a copy gets to Mr. Hicks if he's going to still remain in the courtroom, and then the parties as well? Thank you.
All right, so turn that off a second, I'm going to go, what else can we watch here while we're waiting? Commissioners are still not back, according to me watching on my phone, and I will find something else for us to watch. One of the things that I'm in the middle of an investigation on is relating to Adams County Prosecutor Aaron Haslam, who doesn't appear to actually live in Adams County. Adams County Prosecutor Aaron Haslam, who doesn't appear to actually live in Adams County. He was involved in throwing a trial in Claremont County as a special prosecutor. There's a whole history of Mark Takalvi special prosecutors throwing trials. Uh, but he's, he, he threw a trial relating to, through Tyler Cantrell, who was the assistant prosecutor. He threw a trial through, um, uh, by not calling, get this, it was an assault trial involving Patricia Lambek assaulting Tina Tolan in a Claremont GOP meeting. And at the trial, uh, the Adams County prosecutor did not call the eyewitness. So think about this, they never got called to the stand, they were sitting there. They had come, I think more than one time. Tammy Brinkman was the eyewitness, had no connection with anybody, wasn't a friend to anybody, so she had a perspective and witnessed the assault and that the assault was an intentional act. And she was never even called to the stand to guarantee an acquittal of Patricia Lambek, who I believe should have been found guilty. But I'm gonna play, so I've got, started digging into this Haslam guy. When I crossed through Adams County and West Union, I, I checked things out there and I think I've uncovered more than I bargained for in Adams County. And this is when I was there last week, I think, and then the cops, uh, intercepted me in Adams County because I was asking questions that I guess you're not allowed to ask in Adams County. So let me pop this up and. And, uh, here we go.
Reason I stopped you, I got a call about you.
About what?
Being suspicious up around the, uh, church on Mulberry Street.
Okay, I was checking out, uh, Aaron Haslam's fake apartment when he really lives in Indian Hill. I'm with the press, we're doing an investigation of Aaron Haslam. I'm in Adams County, standing in front of the Adams County courthouse. I've been doing a, what I'd call a slow-paced, long-term investigation into their prosecutor, Aaron Haslam. I've been very interested ever since it appeared that he was part of a forum shop predetermined outcome special prosecutor situation, namely the trial that involved Patricia Lambek, who had assaulted Tina Tolan in a Claremont GOP meeting. So Aaron Haslam was the forum shop special prosecutor that Mark Takalvi put in place. Tyler, Tyler Cantrell was the lawyer. I don't think, what, the thing was so bizarre how they threw the case, the star witness, Tammy Brinkman, who witnessed the assault, was in the courtroom, never got called to the stand and therefore assured that Patricia Lambek would be wrongly acquitted of a crime that she committed. So I was here in May. My name is Chris Hicks, I'm a reporter.
Okay.
And I'm, I'd like to talk to Aaron Haslam. I checked out Aaron Haslam, left stuff at his office, wanted to talk to him, never got back to me. I'm back here again today on July 29th.
Hi.
Hi there, how you doing? I'm looking for Aaron Haslam.
He is out of the office at the moment interviewing witnesses.
Okay, do you know where he's at?
No, I don't.
Uh, is Tyler Cantrell around?
Uh, no, he's not available either.
Okay, so I'm gonna give you my card. My name's Chris Hicks. I came here in May.
Okay.
And got the stiff arm that he wasn't available, he wasn't around, gave him my card, somebody said that Aaron Haslam would get back to me and never got back to me. And I stopped in and looked for him and then I went and checked out where, I think it's fake residence. Here is where the son-in-law of one of the richest men in Cincinnati supposedly lives, in a small little apartment that used to be the apartment of the prior prosecutor who was also pulling a sham, I think. I don't know all the details. I'm gonna come up here and ring the door, knock on the door. Aaron Haslam's married to the daughter of one of the richest guys in Cincinnati. Christine Barrett is his wife, uh, Aaron Haslam's wife. They have a house in Indian Hill. So from 2016, uh, until October of 2023, about the time that, uh, Aaron Haslam started to vote in Adams County, I think in August he started voting in Adams County, up until October of 2023, uh, the Haslums, uh, Christine Barrett Haslam or Haslam Barrett and Aaron Haslam resided at 5750 Given Road, that I'm passing right now, 5750 Given Road. Something doesn't add up about Aaron Haslam and why he is, uh, in Adams County in a dink little apartment when his uber-rich family and kids are living in Indian Hill. This is where Christine Barrett, Christine Barrett Haslam is registered, 5400, um, Waring, Waring, which, uh, seems a little odd that, uh, Aaron Haslam's living in a, uh, like a college, smaller than a college apartment supposedly in Adams County while his wife is in a palatial house in Indian Hill. Or Madeira, by the way. Their kids go to school, I think in private schools in Hamilton County, but he's the Adams County prosecutor and has a little fleabag apartment that apparently was the prior prosecutor's apartment, also part of some sort of scam where the person really didn't live here, really wasn't committed to here and was only, you know, basically had this apartment because it was required to keep elected office. So I came back today and what happens, I go check the place out, next thing I know I'm getting chased by the cops.
How you doing, sir?
Good, how you doing?
Reason I stopped you, I got a call about you.
About what?
Being suspicious up around the, uh, church on Mulberry Street.
Okay, I was checking out, uh, Aaron Haslam's fake apartment when he really lives in Indian Hill. I'm with the press, we're doing an investigation of Aaron Haslam.
Uh huh.
Do you want my license or you wanna check my registration? Cause this is a new car. I'm glad to do that, but I don't appreciate being hassled by cops in West Union.
Well, I'm not hassling you, sir. I'm just issuing a complaint that I had.
From who?
Uh.
From who?
From my sheriff.
From where, okay, from a 9/11 call or does your sheriff happens to give out complaints on press reporters he sees?
Oh, yeah, my, I probably haven't lifted.
So.
What's your sheriff's name?
Sheriff Dick.
Well, I'd tell Sheriff Dick he oughta stay out of the way of reporters. His job isn't to cover for a prosecutor that doesn't actually live in Adams County. It's interesting that you, it's interesting that you, your sheriff wanted me, who, so no citizen made a complaint, no citizen called, your sheriff just decided I was suspicious.
I guess citizens had called him.
I want, who?
I don't know.
Was there a dispatch call? Cause I'm gonna get all the records.
Well, no, sir. I know the sheriff contacted me.
Directly?
I was at the office.
You came out of the office to come after me?
Yes. So.
Am I free to go or are you gonna hassle me some more?
Were you on the property of Mr. Haslam's?
Yeah, I went up and knocked on the door.
Okay.
You know, that's the thing in America you can do is you can knock on somebody's door.
Well, yeah, that's very true, sir. You can.
Right now, you're getting on the verge of detaining me illegally for too long. You got not, I just, I'm a reporter, I came here, I want you to keep that, give that to your sheriff, yeah.
Okay.
Tell your sheriff his job is not to cover.
I will let him know.
All right?
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of the day.
You too, sir.
Bye. So I think there's really something going on here. This is also the home of, um, uh, Steve Caraway, one of the most corrupt political figures in southwest Ohio politics, a ringleader for the household or crooked operation that should be in jail right now for what he was involved with, what he knowingly did, uh, which was, he knew that the money, there was something fishy about the money. I was here on May 14th, I'm back here again on July 29th, and I think I'm gonna be back here again sooner because I've been building up this repository of video and investigation. It's just not been a priority for me because I'm focused on pure Claremont County things. But the way I got, you know, apparently the sheriff sicked the cop on me for having, I guess, asked questions where I'm not supposed to be asking questions here in Adams County. All right, so that was, uh, that was, uh, the, uh, my experience in Adams County with Aaron Haslam. I've got more information on Aaron, uh, Aaron Haslam pouring in. So, so if you have information on Aaron Haslam, apparently when you have a fake residency and so forth, even people in your own county question, uh, you and they maybe are relieved to see the opportunity of somebody raising points that should have been raised, uh, already, okay? So one of the things that I've also started, I'm still watching the commissioner meeting, uh, there's 11 people watching the dead stream of that over there on their site and there are, uh, it says there's 36 people watching across the streams that I do. I do on five different, uh, channels. So they have not come back from executive session. What I'm gonna do next or share next is, um, is I'm starting a new thing called, uh, the, the guide dog and, um, to help people that are having issues getting responsive government. So if you're having that kind of issue, uh, call me. So now, this isn't your normal character, this gentleman's name is Alex Schaefer, I'll play this video. He is a very knowledgeable, he's just a citizen, he's not a lawyer on records law. As we know, there is a conspiracy and it is a conspiracy in our government to hide records specifically from me relating to elected official emails, um, because they don't want me to know what they do or they don't do and it's disgusting and the most disgusting participant in the conspiracy is our own sheriff, Chris Stratten, um, who knows better, knows in his own department. So what happened was I've been told to get any email records from elected officials. I have to pay 11 to $12,000 per week, per week to get those, uh, emails from them and I can only get, I can't, uh, get any breakdown on that. I have to get every, I, there were 10 elected officials were asked for emails, I have to get, pay for all 10 to get any. It's totally corrupt, it's totally wrong. Well, so what the funny part is, different people get treated differently. So Alex Schaefer made a request to Brian Shrive for his emails and he made a request to the sheriff. The sheriff delivered almost immediately, like in two days. Hey sheriff, what about me? What about Chris Hicks? I guess, I guess, uh, you can't, I guess, uh, Jeannie Zoomerley and her team and, and Fraley are a little too strong for you to be able to resist, um, on actually being a decent, uh, person in terms of ethical government. So any event, the, uh, Alex Schaefer requested, uh, emails from, uh, Brian Shrive of the, the head of the civil division, that's the division where they have to keep hiring outside counsel to work for the commissioners, because Brian Shrive is a political hack that doesn't know how to run a civil division that came from Hamilton County and was made head of the civil division with no experience in a prosecutor's office. And so Alex Schaefer was trying to get emails from Brian Shrive. He was getting not, uh, stiff armed, he happened to be down here. We went over and the first ever guide dog episode was me with Alex Schaefer. But if you know or you have somebody who's having an issue with government, I am more than glad to go with you and to help you put heat on these government actors that forget who they work for and forget who pays their salary. So here is the video of, of Alex, uh, Schaefer and me and the first ever, um, guide dog report.
I think the reason he came down, uh, was because of when are you actually gonna produce your emails?
Okay, well, I, let me ask.
That's why he's asking for it, because you haven't produced, the sheriff produced in three days.
That's fine, I appreciate that, but I got.
Are the commissioners producing?
Thank you.
So when are you gonna produce your emails?
I'm, I'm, we're doing our best on it, I appreciate it.
How hard is it?
Well, I have a lot of things that come up throughout the day that may or may not, you know, usually aren't on my calendar and we just had a big filing that was last week, you'll see on there. I'm hoping to get it done in the next day.
So Brian, why do you think that the commissioner, I see on their agenda again this week is more outside counsel? Why are they using outside counsel so much more now than they did in the civil division under Ernie Ramos?
I, I don't know that they are, but it really is a question you probably have to.
Well, they use, they use outside counsel for public records.
Okay.
So why would they not use the civil division? Why are you in their building when they, when?
Well, it's, it's really, I'm not at liberty to discuss what, what my clients are doing or what.
Okay.
So, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could, yeah, please send me a redaction log. I don't need it right now.
You don't need it, you need the emails, okay?
Well, no, that's the. Well, that, that was my other question I was gonna ask, is, it has been two weeks for the emails and I did give you a three-day notice and I had to correct it, which I gave you.
You gave a three-day notice like the day after you sent it, but.
No, no, I gave it to you on Wednesday. I sent it on, I sent it on that Monday and Sheriff Stratten turned it over in three days.
Well. If you need me to do a redaction log, I'm gonna get that. I did, I didn't make a copy, I'm gonna make a copy, that's why I don't want a redaction.
Well, you can send that to me via email, that's okay.
He needs the file that you gave.
Oh, oh, I'm sure, 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 okay.
So if you want a redaction log, I need to go make a copy.
Yeah, please.
I don't think you need it, when are you gonna produce the emails? Within a week?
I, I'm.
Because this is extra work for you, why don't you just produce the email? Like, what do you, what do you need a redaction log for? What you need is the emails, not the redaction log for that.
If you want the redaction log, I just made a photocopy.
I don't think.
Well, let me ask you, well, can I?
I don't think you need the redaction log, you need the emails.
So.
Can I, well, can I ask you this? Instead of doing the redaction log, can you produce my emails now?
Well, I, I've gotta get through the redactions on those, but no, so I'm not gonna be able to get it to you today, but I expect, look at it.
How far in the future?
I'm hoping the next couple of days.
Okay, so why don't you just hold open? I wouldn't worry about Alex a redaction log for that.
I need to make a photocopy of this.
Well, I would not.
Do you want a redaction?
I would, I would rather just get my emails right now. Like, you have time to do the redaction.
Did you produce the emails by Friday?
I expect to have those.
Okay, so just get, let him take that, so he's only asking you for your calendar because of your lack of responsiveness on emails.
Right, and I, and I mentioned.
So, and I don't like, I don't like records requests that are just, you know, what you would call paper terrorist requests. I like ones, the, the root is the emails. The only reason you're requesting his calendar is because he's not producing emails. So if he can produce the emails by Friday.
Mr. Hicks, I appreciate you, you're, you're, you know, but at the end of the day, you're not an attorney, respectfully, if you have.
No, he's not representing me.
So he can't sit free on this. Do you want a redaction log or not?
I'm a reporter, I can ask questions.
But you're not, when I'm asking him a question, I need him to answer. I appreciate that.
Sure, so if, if you.
Do you want a redaction log?
If you can make a copy of that and, and then you can email me the redaction log, I feel it'll take some time and I can just take.
So do you want him to do the redaction log?
Thank you.
And then you think Friday by the emails?
I, I fully expect to, that's my call, I, I, if I don't, I'd be very surprised.
If you could please just let me know if I don't receive by Friday.
If he produces, I'm not an attorney, I'm not representing you, but I'm a reporter, if he produces the, I'm like the I team, if he produces your emails by Friday, then would you let, then he doesn't need to produce the redaction log?
Sure, that would be fine.
If, if, if that saves your time to get the emails.
If he can produce the emails by Friday, he doesn't need the redaction log.
Have a good day, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, so Alex is getting ready to hit the road back to Columbus and, way after we stopped at the sheriff's office and at prosecutor, assistant prosecutor Brian Shrive's office, uh, we were having some good old Claremont County Grandma's pizza and, uh, what happened while we were having Grandma's pizza?
Uh, Mr. Brian Shrive sent an email turning over, uh, the emails that I requested two weeks ago.
So there you have it. So now let's break it down. Brian Shrive gave emails to you.
Yep.
Sheriff, uh, Chris Stratten gave emails to you.
Yep.
And he lives, say, from the commissioner's office, gave emails to me. And so where are we? Now I've still got 10 elected officials who have not produced emails going back four months, four months, uh, from requests. And you know how it all started? How it all started is that, I don't know if you know this, Alex, how it all started.
I don't.
I asked the elected officials to give me a weekly summary of two or three, two to five things that they did that week that they thought were important for.
So.
And how many hours they spent in their elected official duties. They all refused so that I requested emails from them so that I could construct what they did by looking at their emails. So it's all on them. Alex and I are gonna start a, I don't know how often, but we're gonna start a, uh, show basically talking about public records. And one thing about public records, there are records, there are records. These people are, you all using systems that we are the ones paying for.
Correct.
For those systems. They serve us. So all of this public record stuff is our stuff. And you know what else? It's a bond of trust.
When there is a lack of trust, and I hope every Claremont County elected official of the 10 is listening to this, when you start to have a lack of trust with your voters, then your voters ask for more records. So part of it is when somebody asks you, what did you accomplish in the last week and how many hours did you spend in your office? You know what you could actually do?
Tell them.
Tell them, answer.
Should be a straight answer.
It's not a hard thing. And by the way, even if you hate me or maybe Franklin, maybe they hate you here.
Ohio State, maybe now they hate me too.
Even if you hate the person, just ask, is it a reasonable request? Because by the way, if the 10 elected officials that I asked for this from, if they would every week put out just a couple of bullet points of their accomplishments and how much time they spent every week, they would develop a lot more trust with the voters. They would develop a better relationship with the voters where the voters felt like they knew what these people are doing. My fear is some of these people don't do anything. So the ones that do things, like I know the sheriff from what you got, he's doing a lot of stuff. He's got a lot of shit going on based on his emails. But I think some of these elected officials don't do anything. And if you were one of the elected officials that does work hard, why would you cover for the ones that don't? You know, they, that's their problem that they don't work that hard. So any event, Alex, uh, have a good trip back to Columbus. Look forward to seeing you down here again. And I look forward to coming up to Franklin County and visiting, I'm looking forward to visiting your alma mater.
I know Ohio State would love not to have you.
So, so, uh, and just so you guys know, one of the things he's all over is that Ohio State, a lot of, some percentage of the tickets they have for major sporting events, they get, Ohio State is who sells them to the ticket scalping operations.
On the secondary market.
In the secondary market. So they never sell them, well, they technically, I guess they say they sell them at face value to these other companies, but then they get a kickback based on how much they actually sell for.
Yep.
And so they're not actually ever selling those tickets for real at face value. So Alex is all over that. It's very interesting to me. I think it's a big scandal. And I look forward to coming up to Ohio State and spending some time, ringing some doorbells, knocking some doors and trying to figure out what's going on up there.
Love to have you.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm still showing them being in executive session. I'm gonna go, I'm watching on my phone, I'm gonna watch, I'm looking over on their Facebook page, it says there's 10 people watching, I mean, on their YouTube, it says there's 10 people watching. Of which I'm two of them right now. And so that was Alex Schaefer getting some records from Brian Shrive. I'm gonna throw up here in a second, um, let me get this. So, you know, to tell you how ridiculous our county is on citizen transparency and people who claim they're conservatives actually being conservatives. This is, um, you know, the commissioners had this kind of bizarre scenario in which they turned over emails for Angie Livsay when they didn't turn over emails from themselves, Bonnie, uh, Dave, Diamond Dave and, and Claire. And so this went, has gone on and on and they used some of their outside counsel, Isaac Wiles, Ryan, my man Ryan. And I haven't even read this, but Nick Owens is representing me in a case involving Tim Rudd representing the Watchdog Wire LLC and him hiding emails. Um, and this was, this is the response, I have not really even digested this. The, the response of the county to asking, hey, if you turned over Angie Livsay's emails from the commissioner's office, why aren't you turning over Diamond Dave's, Bonnie's and Claire Corcoran's emails? And this is an 11-page response. Now, they want to conflate because I made requests to 10 different offices that somehow these are all the same. And because I requested emails from Genie Zumerly, that has some bearing on email requests to Claire Corcoran. These are two different offices, two different elected officials, but this is what that outside counsel is being used. That I think they love David Painter. I mean, I think they love David Painter. David Painter will spend an unlimited amount of money to prove David Painter is right, no matter how wrong he is. The animal shelter is a great example of that. So I wanted to share this with you. I gotta digest it and read it, but they've got this long-ass reply as to why they are not going to turn over, uh, commissioner emails. Remember, as I mentioned in the video with Alex, I committed the sin, the sin of asking our elected officials to provide me weekly for the Watchdog Wire LLC a summary of, of three to five bullet points of what they accomplished that week and how many hours they spent in the performance of their duties. Seems like a pretty reasonable request, right? And if you were proud of what you did, you would do it, right? And most of us who have ever had a professional job, I was a consultant forever. I always had to do this. I had to do a weekly report of what I was doing. I had to track my time, you know? But, but, you know, it's also a thing called the Hawthorne effect. And it is that if you know at the end of every week, you have to send in a list of three or four or five accomplishments, it makes you be more productive with your time during the week and our elected officials could tremendously benefit from it. Our sheriff could benefit, they all could benefit from it. So the saddest part of the whole thing, frankly, and the biggest disappointment is the sheriff's office. They have really, you know, been over, they have just been over, um, to the insider system when they know, you know, part of this whole email thing was that I was told I had to pay 10 to $11,000 per week per redaction in emails. Well, the sheriff's office knows that's not legal. They know it's a conspiracy. They know it's wrong, okay? Hey, but it's Claremont County, so that's cool. We just do that. We think we operate by a different set of laws or we are afraid to block the system. I would just love for one elected official to basically said, F this. I thought Chris Stratton would be that person, but no, he's actually, I think he's from a political skill standpoint weaker than Leahy and Leahy was more stand-up than than Stratton is on this stuff. Um, I think if Stratton ever did stand up, it would be glorious because I think he would not keep his inner voice. I think he would, you know, the day comes that Stratton goes, he's gonna go, okay? Because I, unless he was lying to me for years, he hates this shit. He hates this stuff. And he, but he has let himself in his office become smack dab in the middle of it. All right. They are still in executive session and I thought I would have given up by now, but it's kind of fun. Uh, next time I'm, I will, if I, I'm not necessarily gonna be able to do this every week, but when I do it, uh, when they go into executive session, I'll play interesting videos that I think are interesting. I might play some that are just fun or amusing, that are not even my stuff. Um, that you might enjoy here, but it might, the funny part is we might find the executive sessions get shorter if more people watch here than they do on the county's channel. We might find that the executive sessions get shorter and, uh, you know, as a result, we get, we get, uh, you know, more, um, we end up getting, uh, shorter executive sessions out of it. Okay. So Alex and I went over and to the sheriff's office as well. And so here is some video of us in front of the sheriff's office. Again, the commissioners are still in executive session. I will cut back to the commissioners the minute they come out of executive session. I'm trying to monitor both on my computer and my phone so that I don't mess up. So, but here is, I'm gonna throw up here, Alex and I at the sheriff's office talking about the records production and the conspiracy to hide records and how they turn records over to Alex that they're not in, in, uh, by the way, subsequently Sheriff Stratton turned over the same record that he turned over to Alex to me. But my independent freestanding request for the same kind of records, email records are getting ignored because of a willful conspiracy involving 10 elected officials and Brian Shrive to defy me my statutory and constitutional rights. All right. So here we go. Here is Alex and I in front of the sheriff's office.
I'm standing here with Alex Schaefer in front of the Claremont County Sheriff's Office. And Alex, on July 14th, I think it is, what request did you make to Sheriff Chris Stratton of the Claremont County Sheriff's Office?
Uh, I made a request for a single day worth of his to and from emails, uh, for July 11th.
And when did you get that, a response to that request? Did you get the emails that you had requested?
I believe I got them either the 16th or the 17th.
So I happen to have this piece of paper here that tells me you got them on the 17th. And that was three days, 14, 15, 16, 17, three days after he made the request.
Letter J, letter J is staff in elected, uh, elected official discussion. Any elected official discussion here today?
They're back.
Hearing none. I will move on to member comments. Members? Any comments today about today's meeting? None? Ms. Mess Kelly, you were here, thanks for coming and participating in, uh, public participation. You asked some questions about, uh, uh, current things at the sheriff's office. I would direct you to, uh, please speak with, uh, Sheriff Stratton, you know, when it comes to, uh, any type of, uh, martial agreement that involves, uh, uh, immigration status here in Claremont County. It is not something that we as a board are pursuing. We, we're not spending any money over to Claremont County Jail on that at all. However, I do know that the sheriff has been in touch, not with ICE, that's, he talks to the marshal's office. And, uh, and that he's reviewing whatever requirements that he can help them with. That's something you really need to talk to him, the status on. The only thing that the commissioners would get involved in that would be the use of the jail. I do know that any agreements like that are, include, uh, an actual daily rate for usage of the jail. Counties don't, don't let, uh, outside agencies use their jail for nothing. So just want to make sure you're aware of that. Uh, county commissioners don't allow the use of a jail for nothing. If there were an agreement with one of those agencies that you were concerned about this morning in your talk, uh, you know, 287G, there would be some kind of agreement between the sheriff's office and the county commissioners that would include a daily rate for the use of that jail. Okay? That has not been done. Nope.
So the decision is made at the sheriff's level?
The sheriff has a review of all of that. It, it's our building. Yeah. Yeah. Anything else? More? With that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting today.
I'll make the motion to adjourn in a second.
Then moved in second. Roll call, Gail.
Commissioner Bachelor?
Yes.
Commissioner Corcoran?
Commissioner Painter?
Yes. Uh, thanks for attending our meeting today, this, this, uh, beautiful day in August the 6th, 2025. We're glad you were here. Whether you were in person or got to participate today or you were on a social media network watching the meeting, we will see you next week. Thank you.
All right, I gotta appreciate Dave giving a shout out to my new social media network to broadcast his meetings. On the Alex video, go watch it, go check out the Watchdog Wire on YouTube, Facebook or on, on X as well in there. And you notice what happened at the end of myself, my prophecy? What the commissioners do a lot of times is if somebody talks of public participation, they don't respond when they talk. They wait until the end of the meeting, hours later, and then they talk and they'll even engage with them. It is absolutely absurd the disrespect these people show for citizens. Now, I disagree with Ms. Mess Kelly completely. Um, I also disagree with David Painter. I would say, if I were him, I'd say if, uh, there are people that are, if committed a crime, we put them in our jail. That's what we do. That's the way it works here. And, uh, we're gonna keep doing that and we're, and that's why we have a jail and so, but you notice he soft-shoes that. A lot of these people aren't really conservatives, they're fake conservatives, but any event, so I just think it is reprehensible that they don't respond to citizens real time when they are, uh, talking and then they make them sit there. Now, Jen, I don't know if she does this or not, but, uh, you know, I'm, I tell everybody, you gotta stay till the end because had she not been sitting there, they probably would have demonized her. You know, in some way. That's what they do with me, so that's why I try to sit there. But they couldn't, why would they not do that elected official discussion first and engage with public speakers when they speak? Do the elected official discussion before executive sessions because that kind of closes out the meeting from the public. And then a lot of times they do executive session and don't have, uh, any business after executive session, as incident's case, even though he announced we will conduct additional business, they did not conduct additional business. That was voting on anything. They just did to finish out their agenda. All right. Thank you guys for tuning in. I'm really, uh, gonna get better at doing this and hopefully it's entertaining now that as executive session, I'll have some videos queued up and have thought it through a little bit. I'll try to get the audio thing worked out right, so we got good, clean audio the whole way and the commenting right as well. And thank you for watching on one of my, this, I think it's four or five, uh, channels on YouTube and Facebook and Twitter that this is feeding on that we consistently have more people watching here than we're watching on the county. All right, thank.